Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. You would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. This business meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom in compliance with RSU 38 policy BED, remote participation in school board meetings. Meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the moranikook.org YouTube channel. Please be aware that the viewing audience is attending through a separate link. Remote board members are attending via an individual link allowing them to speak at will. This is a budget meeting and public comment on the budget items may be given at number 7B. There is also a public comment section for non-budget related items and this is, for this meeting, is number four. If you would like to speak, if you're a member of the public and would like to speak, please use the question and answer to tell Mrs. McGregor that you want to speak and she will promote you to what we're calling a panelist so that you will be able to speak that way. If any questions are posted in the question and answer section, board members who are panelists, that's people that are on Zoom, the board members that are on Zoom, will see this but you should not respond since this is a public forum and people need to be recognized before asking questions or communicating. So, we have to let Diane know that you want to speak and then we'll all be able to hear whoever's speaking. Diane, did I get that? Okay. This is a new system we're trying tonight, so we just want to make sure we get it right. In-person speakers, please sign up for the clipboard by the door. All individuals that wish to speak, whether in-person or virtual, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town you live in. Please note that individuals who do not live in our member communities may or may not be granted permission to speak at the direction of the chair. We also ask that speakers limit their individual comments to two minutes and if someone speaks ahead of you and has a similar view or similar comments that you want to make, please just reference their comments. We thank you in advance for constructive comments.
So, attendance and all votes will be done through roll call. So, when your name is called, board members, please cast your vote with the three available options, yes, approved, no, disapproved, or abstained. I'm going to run through roll call very quickly to make sure that our virtual board members can hear us and we can hear them. So, having said that, Kim Bowie.
Present.
Dave Gilme.
Here.
Jade Parker.
Here.
Dane Wayne.
Here.
Yay. Tyler Dunn. I believe is absent tonight. Kathy Jacobs.
Here.
Melissa Tobin. Patty Gordon.
Yeah.
Rebecca Lambert.
Yeah.
Betty Morrow.
Yeah.
Sean Roderick. Yes. Kelty Bowden.
Yeah.
And David Twitchell.
Here.
There we go.
Okay. So, the first thing on the agenda tonight is a presentation from Kelly Thompson. The floor is yours, Kelly.
I just want to thank you guys for having me here again and I actually have a video that Ms. McGregor is going to play for us so that we can watch that and then I'll be able to answer any questions, okay?
How can you enhance safety, improve communication, increase efficiency, and provide oversight of your operation? One solution does all this. Tyler Drive. It's one-of-a-kind software loaded onto a unique semi-rugged tablet which is mounted on a school bus near the driver. Fully integrated with Tyler Student Transportation software, Tyler Drive provides turn-by-turn directions to each scheduled stop, manages student ridership, records pre- and post-trip vehicle inspections, and electronically logs employee hours. First, your transportation team develops routes for your district using your Tyler Student Transportation solution, Traversa or Versatrans, designating the safest, most efficient way for your students to be picked up and dropped off each day. When a driver logs into a Tyler Drive unit, their assigned run is uploaded using the exact route and stops you built. Tyler Drive provides the driver with route-specific directions to each stop following district policy and safety guidelines. It can provide visual directions or audio only with the screen blacked out while the bus is in motion. These electronic directions are significantly safer for drivers and riders compared to paper route sheets as they allow the driver to keep both hands on the wheel and both eyes on the road. They also make it faster and easier to onboard new drivers or teach sub-drivers a new route. At each stop, Tyler Drive shows the names and photos of the students who are assigned to board or leave the bus at this location. As students enter or leave the vehicle, they scan a radio frequency identification card, or RFID, over the Tyler Drive card reader. This creates a record of when and where the student scanned. The driver is also alerted to students attempting to board the wrong bus or exit at unassigned locations. As each student scans their card, their parent or guardian receives an alert on a secure, integrated mobile app. Tyler Drive has an internal GPS allowing you to manage vehicle location in real time or track and trace the vehicle location, speed, and heading of the vehicle at earlier points in time. Before and after each run, the drivers can undock Tyler Drive and take it with them as they perform their pre- and post-trip vehicle inspections. Tyler Drive provides a customizable checklist and can require a signature from the bus driver to help ensure a thorough inspection. Tyler Drive also manages employee timekeeping. Staff, including drivers, aides, and mechanics, can clock in or out on the tablet so that they don't have to go to the depot to punch in. With Tyler Drive, you can enhance the safety of your students, improve communication, increase efficiency, and provide oversight over your district's transportation. Tyler Technologies. To learn more, visit the web, tylertech.com/tylerdrive.
At that, we have tablets on each one of our buses as we spoke about, I think, in our last meeting when I was here. And our drivers, we've been implementing this very slowly, doing a real slow rollout because we really, a couple of things. We're building all brand-new routes. We're also wanting our drivers to feel successful and I think that that's really important whenever you're introducing something, to give them the time. So, they are now, all schools except for the high school, due to, we were supposed to distribute out cards last week but they weren't in session in person. So, all of our schools now have cards. The cards were given out to students that were enrolled at the time of when we sent out for those to be printed and developed. So, any new enrollments for students, they may not have their cards at this time but they're able to still ride the bus and be loaded manually by the driver. This really helps to expedite when we're at the high schools and the elementary schools loading in the afternoon mass amounts of students and so drivers aren't having to search through their tablet to find each student on their run. So, it's really been a good week this week. We've been really working through, oh, the card reader's not working. How do we troubleshoot that in learning? And then our next rollout will be the Ride 360, which will be the parent app. But we really want to get our card readers and the drivers feeling comfortable with this process. We'll start to roll that out. So, any questions?
Yeah. I see that this system is going to streamline pickups and bus stops. Now, is there going to be less, like, designated areas where the kids will be picked up? Because on Garden Crest right now, it seems like every other house, the bus stops and that's almost like a waste of gas and taking time. Now, would this be required if you got this planned out for streamlining? Would there be designated stops where kids would be picked up?
So, bus stops, it basically is what we're talking about. At this time, the district, we do home-to-school pickup and drop-off. The only time we really do something that wouldn't be at home if it's a camp road or a fire road that we don't have a turnaround for a bus, then we actually ask the parents to bring them to the end of that road. But right now, as we are, we do pick up at each house.
Okay, because I know at one time, when I was growing up, everybody met at the corner.
Yep.
If it was snowing, parents would be like, walk down the road. You know?
I do, I hear you.
And it made the bus stop easier and stuff. So, I wasn't sure if this is part of it, so.
This, I mean, you can do that. We can actually build a stop and we can load any kids and we can expand the circumference of that area that we want to load students from. But right now, as we said, as a district, we do house-to-house, house-to-school, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jade?
So, what information is actually stored on this card?
That's, oh gosh, I left my glasses in the car. I don't know if I'll be able to read this. I actually, I know that that was a concern for some people and so I reached out to the card company that creates our cards for us and I'm going to just kind of try to read this for you. Sorry, guys. But the only information that is stored on the card is a unique 14-digit hexadecimal number. No identifiable information such as name, grade, campus, et cetera, is stored on the card. Either by, there's a barcode on the card for students that have that or the RFID chip. The students' IDs are passive RFID's, which means that it does not omit the information only to a card reader. That's an RFID card reader and it has to be between 1 to 2 inches. To be honest with you, we're finding almost right on the reader is the only time it's successful that it reads information. The only readers that the district uses are located on the buses. So, that's the only place that we have right now that reads these is on our buses.
So, what happens if somebody loses that tablet that's on the bus?
The tablet, there's nothing loaded on the tablet. That's all held as an encrypted device, so it's not information on the tablet. Only thing the tablet has is a stop. It doesn't have other information.
Dane, is it Dane that wants to ask a question? Go ahead, Dane.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I'm pretty sure I saw the video answer this question but the only thing the driver's seeing is the name and the stop, is that correct?
The driver sees the name, the stop, and the age of the student when they load them because a district policy is that they, the grade actually, not the age. Now, we can't drop off if they're second grade or under without a parent present.
And that tablet itself isn't holding any data. It's actually, is there a server back at the bus shack that's holding the data?
Yes, it's not holding the data. They have to log in with a specific login, each driver. They have to be associated with our software program in order to even access their tablet information even for their pre-trip and to clock in and out. And then, once they've done that, they have to be able to know how to load a run if it wasn't assigned to them. So, there's quite a few steps to go through for a sub-driver if I don't make it to change who that driver is that day in order to find that run.
Okay, is there any part of this communication between the bus and back to the transportation office where there is student PII? Is there any identifiable information that's either on the server back at the office or is it just name and age that you guys have?
Just, are you asking, does the actual software program have more information in it?
Right, when a student is loaded into the server or whatever it is to be into that system, what information is loaded into there?
I mean, in my system that I have, it's all of their information.
Okay, who has access to that?
It comes from Power School, so.
Okay, and who has access to that?
I have access to that and I have an assistant that has access to that.
And one last question.
Yeah.
If a student loses their ID, is there a fee?
We haven't got there at this time, no. We're hearing a lot of feedback that I don't have my card on me today and we really think that it's going to be a process of just learning and working through it. That's why we're rolling this out slowly.
Cool, good job, I appreciate it.
Sorry if I didn't answer that.
Nope, thank you.
Patty?
Hey. The question, well, I had the question about what happens if you lose your card but you already addressed that. And my other question is, so, do the parents, like in the video, do parents get the auto message saying your kid got on the bus, your kid got off the bus?
That will come with the, so there's, or they will. They will have that. Yeah, so it's like three different components. Traversa does our routing, gives all our stops. Ride, Tyler Ride is our tablets and Ride 360 will be the app for parents.
So, my question about that with the app is, and don't even, Diane, don't laugh at me, okay? So, at that time, when the parent, when somehow, somewhere in cyberspace, a communication goes through parents like, you, your bus, you're getting on the bus, then there has to be identifying information floating around to get to the parent or like, right?
So, that's through their Power School ID number. So, everything is done through, so everything that loads into Traversa is coming from Power School. And so, that's from their Power School ID number. So, the parents would have information to that. But you can't really get into it, like, Power School unless you have the web access ID and the passwords and that kind of stuff, so.
So, if I stole Jade's card, if we were to load kids and it wouldn't let me get to her parents' phone number or house address?
No, there's nothing on the card that's identifiable. If you were on, if you stole her phone maybe and you stole the parent's phone, then you have bigger problems. But, but you, you know, if she had her apps all open, I guess you could see it there, right? Thanks.
Sean?
So, how does this work? Can you show this system in place with the school? But there are a lot of, well, more than instances where parent, there's a parental dispute or something like that and the parent goes to drop, you know, a mom or a dad or a disgruntled parent wants a child. How is that communication going to work? That's always a concern of mine in these situations. I hear a lot of horror stories where, you know, like, I know if they go to pick up the school, police notify the school, the court, or how's that going to work on the bus? Like, I know with text, I'm still on text chains, checks that I don't want to get anymore and trying to get off. So, how would that communication work?
So, and you're asking, just so I know, if a parent that wasn't supposed to have access to a student?
They want that child and like, how, like, if you got notified at 8 o'clock this morning that there was an issue between, whatever, my wife and I and someone said Sean can't have the kids and I'm getting a text while they're getting off the bus. Like, how is that going to work?
That's going to be, I mean, to be honest with you, because I worked at the high school for seven years, so I really feel like we get information sometimes pretty slowly about situations and that, to that nature, about guardianship and, you know, permission to have or not have a student, so.
And if you don't have an answer for that now, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, we would have a note. We would basically be able to take that parent off that communication if we were notified.
Right, but I think that information probably goes to the school and we need to make sure that information's there to you. And again, I don't even expect.
Yeah, yeah, but no, those are really good points and we work on that even without this, you know? Like, how do we not let a student off at a home if there's a parent there, right? So, that's a great question.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, what if someone wants to go to someone's house after school on the bus? Is that going to create a lot of extra work for someone at the school to get into the database and notifying?
No, I mean, it's really, it's really kind of easy. So, right now, the process is that if a student, as long as it's the same bus, because we're still in those COVID protocols and they wanted to go to a friend's house, then they could. They have a note that lets them do that with a parent. What's really great about this app is that, let's say I don't go in and make a change because of whatever reason, that bus driver would have a note saying that it's okay. But when that child goes to swipe off at that address, it's going to give them an alert that says not the correct address, do not unload. They can override that and unload them as long as they have permission. So, it's almost, especially if you think about a sub-driver, like, we have them up there every single day and they don't know the kids or what they look like. And if that comes up, they're going to really question like, oh, what happened, you know? Or maybe even if they can call me then on the radio and we can talk about it and make sure that that's at a safe place to drop.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kelly?
I mean, if you think of anything too, feel free to email me. We'll do the best that we can to help you and thanks, you know, for your support with this. I really think it's something that's going to be super, super efficient to increase safety for when we have spare drivers. So, it's really important and I had a spare driver use it for the third time today and just a small, and she was very timid about it but she came back and she said that was really so helpful. So, and so it's really, it is a tool, I think, that we can utilize to help. If you think about, this is what bus drivers were doing with a piece of paper. Okay, next stop. And it's not doing that now. It's actually talking to them and telling them where their next turn is and so it's just a lot safer on the roads.
Thank you, Kelly, for all your work. I just was, I'll just tell you a little story. I've been putting my second grade, like, pre-K grandkids on the bus for the last couple of weeks. They're so happy that they have this little card. They're just like, they can't wait to get on the bus and put it on them.
But you guys, honestly, so every, because we rolled it out at different schools and when we got, and finally got to the middle school, they were, I mean, they were calling, when are my cards going to be here? We ended up having to miss one group of kids because they broke off into their specials, whatever you call that. And they were just so upset by this, okay? And the high schoolers are like, what cards? When are we getting them? Why don't we have them? So, it is really exciting and I think it's going to be helpful. Ride 360 for sports parents. Imagine that you know when your student's actually leaving a field so you know how far you could be at the school. I think that that's going to be a really cool feature too. But, you know, we're learning, I'm learning all the back stuff and it's really going to, they're coming up with some great new things. So, it's working out well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we have any citizen comments other than anything about the budget? So, I'll just remind citizens, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please use the question and answer. I don't know what it looks like but it's on the screen. And tell us, or tell Diane and then she'll promote you to a panelist and then you'll be able to speak. Nobody? Okay, great, thank you. Are there any adjustments or additions to the agenda by the board or superintendent? Seeing none. Go to the action. So, the first action item is to approve the minutes of our April 6 meeting. Do you have an motion? I move that we accept the minutes of April 6, 2022.
Second.
That's been moved in second and is there any discussion?
Sounds good. Kim, you're up first.
I'm staying.
Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler's not here. Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa's not here. Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
So, it passes with one abstention. Did I count that right, 10 yeses? So, the next thing on the agenda is an update from Jade on the progress for a high school principal.
Yes. So, I was really ambitious and then COVID got in the way here. So, just so that you guys know, today we finished our second round of interviews and that second round, the first round consisted of, I think it was 13 or 14 committee members. They narrowed that down to three choices. Then what we did was we invited those three top choices back to the high school. They each came Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They spent the morning with us where they interacted with staff. They interacted with students. They did a writing sample. They took a tour of the school and then they met with me after they were done, all of that. And we did a review. The committee is meeting tomorrow morning to make a final selection and then we will proceed with an offer to whoever that first choice is. And I expect to bring the nomination to you guys on May 1st, May meeting. I want to say May 4th? 3rd or 4th, something like that. So, so we're on track and that works out really well because we've had some outside candidates. So, it's been a very good process. I know there's a couple of people that have been involved here and the, I'll just mention that the candidates really, it really gave them a flavor of what Moranikook is all about by being at the school for the morning. It was really nice, the comments from the students and the comments from the staff. We had a forum so they could give us feedback, a Google forum, and we collected all of that and we'll be sharing it with the committee tomorrow. So, so we're very close.
No, you can't really, can you say, how many people apply?
We had, I believe we had 10 applications in all and we interviewed five in the first round.
That's pretty good.
No, no, we are very lucky with the candidate.
Because I've heard from other schools that have had principals' jobs and got like one or two.
Yeah. No, it's just. We are very likely, yeah.
That's why I'm.
Yeah.
That's right. Any other questions for Jade?
By the way, forward, next meeting, I'll have a name.
Right, thank you. Okay, on to the budget. Let's have some updates.
Alrighty, so in your packet, you'll see the typical pages that we do with the general fund summary budget on the first page. Again, if you look over, we made the adjustment. We made just a couple of very minor adjustments to the budget from last Wednesday. You approved the leave of absence for Angela Palmer and we adjusted the budget to be able to account for that. And then we were able to take a look at retirements and getting our retirement payouts in this budget year. So, it's a very minor adjustment. It wasn't, it's not like a ton of money but you'll notice it did drop just a hair more. So, we finished at being just about a million, a little over a million dollars over from last year, which translates to a 5.62% overall increase to the budget. Our total budget that we're submitting to you guys is what we're bringing. The next page is the revenue page and again, just minor adjustments going forward from there based on that million dollars, that little, that million dollars extra going forward. And then, of course, the final page is the local dollar calculation. And again, you can see what the, where the final numbers fell, especially on that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 blocks down. So, you can see the kind of the direct impact per town, overall 6.2 and then each town has got their share broken out from there going across. That's the basic updates up to this point. Andy, did I miss anything?
Are there any comments from citizens about the budget?
Okay, so Dane, you should have it now. It just took a minute to get to you, so.
Again, if citizens have comments or questions, you can put, let Diane know and she'll make sure that you can ask. Any? Okay, so, discussion on the board? Okay, so discussion on the board? Any questions, comments? Are we ready to make a motion to approve? More discussion, what time to think, what time to vote, get the paperwork?
Make a motion that we approve the 2023 budget amount of $31,161,272.20.
Any discussion? Can I just say not?
All right, here we go. Kim, you're up first.
Yes.
Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Jade?
Yeah.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes unanimously.
Then in your packets also is the adult ed. We have to vote on that going forward as well. So Manny put together the sheet so you could see kind of the progression. We're looking at year 23, and the total budget there we need is in that sample, that sample motion that's on the sheet. Sorry about that.
Any questions about the adult ed budget?
Kim, not really the budget, but adult ed in general. When does he hear about this big old grant?
Oh, yeah, we're still waiting. Yeah, I don't know what, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know what the exact date is. I think we won't know until close to the end of May at the earliest.
But before the end of this week?
I'm hoping. I will double check with Steve and get back to you on that, though. That's a good question. The end of May, yeah, but I will double check with Steve just to be sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, Steve, do you know when you might hear notification about the grants is the question?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm supposed to know by the first week of May. That's when they're supposed to tell me. So I'm going to tentatively think the second week of May, because I'm very excited.
Thank you, Steve. So is there a motion for the approval of the adult ed budget?
I move we approve the fiscal year 2023 adult and community education budget in the amount of $272,115.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
I just have one question. For the registration fees that have gone up, like $39,000, is that because there's a lot more people interested? Or is it because the fees have gone up themselves?
It's because there's more people interested and know, like last year, we didn't have the participation rates that we're having this year, so it's, yeah, it's more.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, alrighty. Kim, you're up first.
Yes.
Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Jade?
Yeah.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay, so. So the next thing is to call and approve the warrants. So we have a motion.
I move that the vote entitled vote to call and approve the warrants for the budget meeting and validation referendum, and to authorize a notice of amounts adopted, be approved in form presented to this meeting, and that a copy of said vote be included with the minutes of this meeting.
Rebecca, Rebecca. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Wait, no, you can vote, Jim. Oh, you were going to vote. I thought she had a question. Sorry.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I was a little ahead. Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Jade?
Yeah.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler. Oh, sorry, you guys. Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
It is unanimous. So we are going to pass around some things for you guys to sign while you're sitting here. There'll be two packets. One will start at Betty, and one will start with Dave, and they will cross. And Donna's going to pass out some pens. It'll take a couple minutes here.
Now we're waiting for the cross? David, you must have a nice, long signature. That's why it's stalling at you. Let's go, let's go.
Because they're coming at him from both sides.
Is that it? Make sure you pass them in the right direction, David. Pressure is on. If you screw it up.
Betty has the neatest handwriting I've ever seen.
Honest to goodness, I know. And then it's followed by Nessie and Nessie one of them. Is that a penmanship thing? Oh, yeah. I was never getting that.
More signatures.
Too bad either. I mean, they're very, they are very similar. Did you see mine in Kelsey's? KD, Nessie. They're very similar. I'm signing on my square. I know. I can't do it any otherwise.
I just know the ones I'm passing to when I hear it actually.
Oh, my goodness. Eddie, it looks like a font.
Stuttered on that one.
I don't, I mean. Look at how many stack up. We'll work with uniqueness, little miss needle.
I don't think so either.
Nessie Marvin sends them your way. Ooh, we got.
Needs to be done, but.
Right, because that one.
Yeah. Pizza party after this, everyone? Okay, yeah, right. I mean, it's a good idea, David.
Is anyone signed everything? Okay, so the last item, well, almost the last, is to go into executive session. So do I have a motion?
I move we move into executive session to consider the duties of officials, appointees, employees pursuant to one MRSA section 4056A.
Okay, everyone good? Kim?
Yes.
Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Jade?
Yeah.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay, so we just talked about how, as a board, we really want to support our superintendent, our administrators, and all of our teachers, and hopefully get through the year with them, giving them some opportunities to have some flexibility in some of the work that they're doing. And so we're going to offer some opportunities for different ways of managing that. So Jay will be developing some things for the administrators that will help teachers, because we think it's really important at this point to support teachers and let teachers and administrators and Jay know how much we have appreciated everything that they've been doing throughout this whole pandemic, and that we see and we know that it's been really difficult. So we've been, we've been talking a lot about how can we help you to manage everything that we're asking you to manage. And one of the ways is to maybe ask you to do less. So I think that at this point, there's going to be some opportunities offered, and we're really hoping that people will take the opportunities that we're going to be offering them, because it's really important for your health and for the health of our, of our district, that you do that, and we want to help you to take care of yourselves and to do that, because we really appreciate all of you, so. Go ahead.
I just want to add, I guess, take advantage of the, you know, protect everybody, but encourage. I know sometimes people get really wrapped up in the work, and to take advantage of Jay, and everybody, take advantage of these things, because it's been a long haul, and it's not over yet.
Any other comments? Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Move we adjourn.
Second again.
We're adjourned. Dane likes me to do that.
Thank you.